Everybody can hear me okay? Yeah. You muted my mic on the computer, but I've got to have a mic. Okay, it is the 11th day of April 2023 and the time is 5:32. As Presiding Officer, I hereby call this regular meeting of the Chiliquan City Council to order. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Following the confirmation and the approval of the agenda, the council will consider business coming before act. Public input shall be limited to matters pertaining to the business of the city and to the transaction of city business. In the event you have matters of personal business or issues involving personality or performance, they should be submitted in writing to the City Hall Office to be forwarded to the City Council for further review. Under no circumstances is public input or comment permitted during the period of council deliberation. During the period of public input, public comments are limited to three minutes per person and no more than 10 minutes per topic. Maximum time for all public input shall be limited to 30 minutes total. As Presiding Officer, I reserve the right to limit input and to rule out of order persons whom by testimony are deemed abusive, disruptive, or obscene. In addition, I shall not accept testimony of a discrediting nature. May I have roll call, please?
Robert Cohen.
Joe Allen Senior.
Julie Vettles.
Michelle Ochella.
Kevin Kettner.
This council does have a quorum. Review the agenda, please.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Michelle, second by Kevin. Please note the changes to our regular schedule. All those in favor to approve the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 You opposed? The agenda is approved. Regular business moving down to the minutes dated March 28th, 2023 of the regular city council. I'll go back to it. Entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated 3/28/23 and the reading thereof.
Motion by Kevin?
I'll second.
Second by Robert. All those in favor to approve the minutes dated March 28th signify by saying aye.
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 You opposed? You're opposed. Minutes over. City bills, does anybody need to review? So everybody had an opportunity.
Make a motion to approve the bills dated as of April 11th, April 11th, 2023 in the amount of $16,518.50.
I'll second it.
Motion by Michelle, second by Kevin. All those in favor to accept the city bills signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
You opposed? You're opposed. And we are going to move down to the city correspondence at the request of Commissioner Hensley as we are waiting for. Commissioner.
We have a question about correspondence.
Hey?
Is this no-cost reforestation? Do you use a bowl by cities? Government agencies? Or is this for residents only? Is the reforestation correspondence information usable by cities or is this for? I'm interested in finding out and if so, looking into it. Thank you.
They have a website on there, so. Info might be there.
More in correspondence, so I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence.
I'll second it.
Motion by Michelle, second by Kevin. All those in favor to accept the correspondence signify by saying aye.
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 Right, correspondence has been approved. So what we can do at this time is we can move to updates such as the Chiliquan Festival.
So the one thing, Don Radamaker was asking if we need to do any approving for the high school to get rid of the graffiti on the building we own?
No, it's, yeah, the Markworth Building.
Yep. So I told him I'd bring it up to you guys, so I didn't know if this was something the council had a vote on or they could just go do it.
Joe, he said the building they own or the building?
We own, the Markworth Building, that's what they're asking. So it's been graffiti and apparently the high school wants, a bunch of the students want to paint over it and do it as a project.
Cover up the graffiti on there.
They're not asking for anything other than just permission and if so, will we give it?
So it's not a mural or anything like?
No, they're just blacking it out and whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we get a letter of the highest of accepting the liability. I understand John's on the board and everything and so he would know from that district angle that they would assume the liability and responsibility.
Yeah, I can ask him.
That's the only thing I would ask.
Okay.
I don't want to take away from the county commissioners briefing by any means. However, there are a few items on here that I think we might be able to provide updates to that are not going to interfere with the mass of the briefing such as the Chi-Town Festival briefing.
Okay. So we're moving along very well. We have raised three-quarter of our budget. So we have a budget of just right at $14,000 and we have $10,500 in sponsorships.
Wow.
So we do have a little bit left to go or we'll have to figure out what to cut and hopefully we don't, we don't want to cut anything. We have 32 vendor booths already signed up. We have about three or four volunteers, which is way beyond where we were last year at this time for volunteers. And we have both the TP and the Moley's Crater Lake. Yeah, signed up for food as well as an ice cream truck and a shaved ice truck. So, and next weekend, Kim and I are gonna, I think this weekend, go down to Klamath and start knocking on some of the food trucks and see if we can get any of them interested.
Very nice.
And then I can give you an update on stage for it.
That would be great.
Okay. So as you remember, we did designate some funds for that. Previously, the council approved $3,000 for public works to go and rent the equipment they need to level the land and everything, which they haven't done yet because it's been covered with snow, but it's almost all melted. So hopefully after Fred gets back, that can be done. And then we got a new quote from Taylor for the covering. And the great news is it dropped in price by $4,000. So it is now $8,300 instead of $12,400. Yeah, so that was something I was hoping to make a motion later that we'd go ahead and approve so we can get that ordered. We may not have it in time and install it in time, but if we do it now, there's a chance that we can get on the schedule and get it up here and installed before the event in June. And then we, as I mentioned before, we do have the portable stage from Hensley Field, right? Always mixed up names. So that's already there for this year. And then we did submit a KTRAP grant to Klamath Tribes for $12,000 for a permanent outdoor stage. So I don't know when we'll hear back on that, but hopefully that'll be good news later on as well, too. I'm trying to think anything else. We went and participated in City Surf event a few, before we left to go down to the funeral. And so that's a volunteer group that's tied with the City Fest coming up in May. And so with City Surf, what they're trying to do is all these opportunities to help cities, Klamath and Chiliquan and others. So we were there to promote the Chi-Town and had, that's where we did get a few of the volunteers already signed up. And we're going to be on a website that they are running. And Hannah was also there for promoting the cleanup for the new bike park. So, and she got a few volunteers as well, Dennis, too. So already some promotion. I think that's about it.
What was your next meeting?
This Thursday. And I think we move to regular meetings. I think, I think we move to every week now.
And the fire chief, does he still have somebody involved in attending?
Yeah, Bonnie is usually always there. She runs, she'll be running the silent auction again and their booth setup.
I was just gonna ask you about that next. A letter, do they need anything from us as far as an outreach letter or?
No, we've already been promoting it, but we'll start heavily, we've been promoting the booths and kind of a little bit lightly the volunteers and silent, and now we'll start heavily promoting the silent auction. And then in another few weeks, we'll start heavily promoting the volunteers.
Okay, so are you also asking volunteers to give a donation? I mean vendors?
They, yes, so we are set up again, so it's $5 for Friday, $10 for Saturday. And we'll have a list and we'll go through and hopefully get all of that as well. So if that all comes through, that'll be another 500 or so.
Beautiful.
And then last year, we did raise two grand for the Chiliquan Fire and Rescue Volunteer. So hopefully we'll top that this year.
Would be great. Thank you, Robert, for that update. The time is 5:45 and the council member.
I'm sorry, ten late, I apologize.
Not a problem to everybody. And let's see. We really have a thin agenda this evening. I did want to give the council member, General Manager Lopez from the tribes came down to my office today and he did convey a thank you, gratitude for the letter of support that we've provided for their housing project, the turkey project. So that was an amazing thing to do. And I don't know which updates, Teresa, that you feel like we can move forward on?
Can I go ahead?
How about an update on the pocket park with fixtures maybe?
Give me a second to pull those up, let me. So Monday is the rescheduled League of Oregon Cities Small Region 10, Small Cities Meeting here at the Community Center, 11:00 AM. And again, Patty Mulville and Mayor Steve will be here. He's the current president of LLC this year. And so Patty will be giving an update on the new five-year strategic plan that the league adopted. And then Steve will be going over his agenda for the year. So that again has been a wider dissemination to larger cities and county and tribe and others. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout now that we don't have snow and weather impacting that. So again, that'll be 11 to 1. Lunch will be provided. And then we have arranged tours to the Green Schoolyard afterwards and over to the Hervey Building afterwards. So all of that on Monday.
I will be there. Send that to my maker. Yep. Thank you, Robert.
And then. So I can share this. Get over there quick. Okay, so we haven't had a new meeting since the last one, but just to give you guys on update. So you guys, we're all familiar, the corner, the upper picture there is what currently it looks like.
Right, under his phone.
And so the new pocket park, thanks to, we have a new rendering though since last time, this thanks to Kathy.
You don't have to sign in.
So Kathy did this, so this is basically properly to scale and everything, so thanks again Kathy. So this is what it will look like once we're all done with the different phases in that corner. And so what we've done is we did have two contractors come out to give us bids for concrete. Modoc Contracting submitted a bid, it's $80,000 for the concrete. So it is a big chunk, but it is well worth it. Mathis, I'm still waiting for him and his verb hit, and last time I talked to him a few days ago, he really wasn't planning to submit the bid because he says Modoc just continues to undercut everybody right now. They're being extremely aggressive, but I asked him again to send one, but I still haven't received it. So with the money we have, so again, we have $10,000 from last year's KTRAP grant that we rewarded, we have $2,000 from CCB. So what we're planning on to do is do the concrete and to do the seating walls. And there was one other thing, I forgot what it was. And then Kathy and I worked on and we submitted a grant to AARP for their community challenge grant and we will know very soon, either this month or early next month. And those monies have to be spent by, before the end of the year, I think it's November. And what we put in there for that was for 388 compliant benches, an ADA compliant table, trash can, and I guess, and the umbrella. And yeah, what we do have planned for right now is the materials to do the wrapping for the planner boxes around the flagpole. So between what we have now and if we are fortunate to get the AARP grant, that'll basically complete this as you see it here. We have one more grant opportunity that just opening up right now and I think we have till June, but we can't submit it, so CCB will have to submit it. It's the Union Pacific Railroad Grant. So cities can't, but 501 cities can. So that's the one we're planning to go after next. We're gonna stall as long as we can because if we don't get the AARP, then we'll resubmit for the same things. If we do get the AARP, then what our plan is to go after the signage and stuff like that. So things, you know, and we'll have to talk a little bit more in the next committee meeting about exactly what we want to try to do. But, you know, things that were brought up, which is like replacing the parking sign, doing a history of the city, doing a history of Klamath Tribes, you know, maybe some more planting and there could be some other additional things. So that grant goes anywhere from $2,500 to $25,000. So that'll be our last opportunity probably this year. And then we'd have to wait around for next year. Things like the OPRD and things like, and, and all these others that would come back again to be able to finish the park. So, so that would be the second motion I was hoping to make tonight is to go ahead and get council approval to do the concrete for $8,800 so we can again get on Modoc's list. Because we don't know when they'll do it because they have a huge backlog right now because of, the weather has been delaying a lot of projects, so.
And we see the before picture again or the current?
Oh, yeah. You mean that one?
Yep, that's what it looks like now. And what about our, our city workers about the middle light pole? Are they gonna take that down?
They are gonna take it down, they just haven't done it yet, but it's on their schedule to do.
Beautiful.
They still haven't fixed their lift. So they have to coordinate with the fire department to be able to fix them. They don't have anything tall enough to get up there right now.
Thought maybe in the past that what, Hunter or the power company offered, let us use?
That's a good idea. I could reach out to Hunter. They have a ton of crews here right now. Some are third-party, but they do have a couple of their own trucks, so they might be a good citizen and do that. We could coordinate. So I can reach out to Fred and Charlie and see if, or something unless Gunga wants to. And then I can coordinate with Hunter.
Did we have all the parts for replacement?
I believe he has everything he needed, he just still left, but again, we can double check.
Did we lose any flags in that process?
Everything was captured when they flew away.
Okay.
Thanks to Kim and others.
Oh, thank you.
So you just need the old K to have the sand work done?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so before you came, the other motion was for the stage canopy for out at the rodeo grounds. But yeah, there's two different motions. Monies that are planned, just need to go ahead and make improvement to do.
Are you gonna make those motions?
Whenever the right time is.
Well, we can do that then.
You want to do it? Okay, so go ahead and ask for the first motion. This is for the council to approve the contract with Modoc, the proposal for the concrete for the pocket park for $8,800.
Second. Motion by Robert, second by Michelle. All those in favor to start the concrete project with Modoc signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
You opposed?
And then the second motion I'll make is for using the funds we had already set aside for the rodeo grounds to do, to go ahead and put an order in with Taylor for the canopy cover for the stage area. For, and I'll go ahead and just say $9,000 for right now, not to exceed $9,000, which is a little bit above the current code of $8,300. So give us a little bit of room there.
Well, we could probably go up to $10,000, that's how much we have, right?
We had a little bit more than that, but I, I'm comfortable with nine for right now.
Okay. Motion by Robert?
I'll second it.
Second by Kevin. All those in favors to begin the project of the staging area at the rodeo grounds signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right, we can skip down to the mayor's report. Oh, actually, welcome. I didn't not hear you walk in. You were very, very, very welcome though. We are going to then move over to the county commissioner briefing that we have in front of us.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Hi, everyone, Commissioner Kelly Minty, and I do apologize for getting the timing wrong. I had got it in my brain that we started at 6:30, so I apologize to the members of the council and the mayor. I should formally open my meeting as well if, with your
Yes, please do.
Permission. I'm calling to order the board of commissioners in our meeting that started at 5:30, but now it's closer to 6:00. We have Commissioner Hensley here and Commissioner Minty and Commissioner and shared group is online. And yeah, back to you, thank you.
Beautiful, thank you. So in the county commissioners briefing, and we'll just do these in order. Other than the items that we've already discussed, we can just mention that those have been approved. The new well, and I will turn this over to our city engineer.
My name's Dan Scallas, contract city engineer for Chiliquin. I think most of the commissioners are familiar with the well and the wastewater projects, but I know Hensley, I've been on the commission for very long, but just a quick brief. Cities needed a new well for a long time. We essentially have one water source right now, so the city's well one, which is not too far. I don't know, maybe 100 yards that way from where we're sitting right now. Infrastructure's pretty much on the fritz. There was kind of a scare this last fall where the electrical panel blew up and the city kind of had to rush to get a replacement. I think contractor, local contractor had a kind of a spare, so they replaced that quickly. But we need to drill the new well. Current status is in, we do have, it's fully funded. The last bit of funding is a community development block grant. And with that, we are just trying to finalize environmental review before we can really get the, the project out to bid. And it's, it's kind of hung up a little bit with environmental review, mostly administrative. It's, it's not technical issues, it's mostly administrative issue with actual report. That's really all I have as far as the well update. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Dan, for that overview. And in the packet of the notes, I believe, did you guys get one as well, the summary? There is some, a brief summary of the different projects and some more background information. Teresa, did you want to add anything to the summary at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner.
What timeline for completion of that project and what are the anticipated costs?
Timeline's probably a 12 to 18 month project. It's a pretty extensive well, potentially up to 1,700 feet deep because it has to access the same aquifer as well one, which is a pretty deep aquifer. And there's no groundwater data out there that's that deep, so we don't know exactly how deep we're gonna go, but that's the expectation. So pretty deep well, there's also the transmission pipe to go out there. So again, pretty recent size project, 12 to 18 month construction time. Don't have the numbers in front of me, a number, a lot of numbers floating around in my head. I think it's four and a half million. Yeah, so there's a few other things, meters throughout town, water, new water meters, again, transmission line, the wellhouse, the well to rehab well one, once that well comes online. So new building, new pump, new controls, everything for this well one. With the state, so a number of different state agencies, they're all pretty much teed up, ready to go.
I guess I should. As far as committing to.
So water resources transfer's already been approved and ready to go. Yes.
Thanks.
Were there any other council members that wanted to add to either item one or two? New well? Or the new wastewater treatment plant?
The only question I had, I guess, is that I recently heard that there was a hearing or something downtown associated with, with a recent one, maybe last week? Or some kind of public?
So the remand hearing is, actually got rescheduled. So it's closer to the end of the month, I think 26th. Yeah, it's, it was rescheduled from, I think, a week ago.
Okay.
That's probably what you're referring to.
Okay, that the public is coming to. Okay, that the public is coming to. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move down to the EPA and the brownfield update. And Kathy, I'm gonna rely on you heavily for this. And thank you for being here as well, and thank you for all the work that you've provided in this project with the brownfields.
Welcome, thank you. I'm Kathy Stewart, and I'm an independent contractor with a city working on their um brownfields program. Uh, there's a little summary in your packet there if you wanna follow along, but the city has three different sources right now for brownfield funding, uh both from uh business Oregon grants. We have a fifty thousand dollar project that's already been completed, um and a hundred thousand dollars pending to clean up the um asbestos debris pile behind the Mar Court Building, which was the collapsed mercantile building. Um, basically, the issue there is that little pieces of drywall within the original building are mixed into that pile. And that was the only material that was found and contained asbestos, so not a big deal, but it's gotta be handled um as asbestos in order to go to the landfill. Um, while we're on that subject, there's also a information in here, sort of a informal letter or request to uh all of you to see if we could keep the cost down for the asbestos disposal by hauling it all to Clamath County. Otherwise, it all has to be hauled to uh White City. Um, and that that'll triple our transportation cost. And uh our understanding is that there's a sort of a minimum amount that can go to Clamath County landfill. And it kind of takes the asbestos, but there's a a minimum amount. Um, and sort of along the lines of partnership, we uh received this building uh from the county and took it on with all the brownfields work. If we could sort of continue to work together uh to try and control the costs, um that would be great. There's so there's a letter in in this packet in front of you, sort of explaining that and providing that detail. Uh, we're hoping to go out to bid with that very soon, so um we're gonna have the bidders bid it two ways. One, we haul it to Clamath, one, we haul it to to White City so that we can move forward with that that work, but follow up with you on on all of that. So in addition to to that work on on that collapsed building, uh the city has a US EPA community wide assessment grant. Um, that was a three hundred thousand dollar grant, and we've been doing phase one assessments, phase two side assessments. Leveraging that work to do building renovation, and we'll talk about that um in a moment. We've done some structural look at buildings if we want to rehabilitate and, you know, with an eye towards economic development and vitality here uh in downtown. Um, we've done an inventory in town of what are the other buildings that we might look at, um partnering with folks to see even simple things like asbestos and lead based paint, so that people could, businesses could move forward with building rehabilitation and that kind of thing. Then we have a U S CPA uh cleanup grant for the Markford Brothers Building. Uh, that's a four hundred thousand dollar uh grant. And that will be used to address the environmental issues we found in the building, some underground storage tanks, lifts for automobiles, a little bit of asbestos and lead based paint in the um joint compounds within the building, that kind of thing. And we've done some, I think I mentioned, uh structural work looking, we've recently completed a survey, structural survey of the Mark Court Building and the nearby hotel. Um, you know, we only have so many historic buildings in town, and every time we bring it up at city council or folks in town, there's a huge desire to try and save what we've got, um because it's all that we've got left. So uh I don't have the structural report uh yet, but we'll see where that leads us moving uh forward on on that building. Um, let's see. Redevelopment opportunities. So uh as part of the EPA work, we'll look at uh redevelopment opportunities both for the Mark Court Building or any other buildings in town, but also at the county owned property, the the old mill site, which um one of the original concept designs is is here on the wall. Um, but it's it's that triangular piece sort of out there by the the elementary school. It's still owned by the county. Um, so we'll probably circle back with you fairly soon to sort of recommit uh between the city and the county as to what's what's possible there, so that we can have community meeting here and get feedback from folks. And just make sure we're all on the same page as to what that can be uh going forward. I think that's and we'll talk about for a moment the the Hervey Building um next door. Um Commissioner Minty, I know you know Hannah Levine. Um, and Hannah and her partner, Richard, um are the new owners of the Hervey Building. Both the city and Chiliquin visions in progress, we all sort of partner together, work together. We have an Oregon Main Street Grant uh to do the historic restoration of that building, so leverage these EPA dollars to to do that work there and clear rid of asbestos and lead based paint and that kind of thing, so. Lots of good sort of collaborative work going on there. What did I forget?
Are there any questions at the same about the Brownsville project or program for Kathy?
I had the pleasure of reading through these briefs today when I was at work, and these are really exciting. And when I I got here a little early today, I just looked at them as well, and I thought, wow, there's a lot of potential here. I was really um encouraged by these. I just have one question that I want to make sure that I fully understand. When we were talking about the Markport Building, you you mentioned that that our landfill has a minimum, did you mean maximum amount?
Yes.
Okay, and did?
That would be.
Because you're estimating that there's five hundred cubic yards, which would be over. Um, what we would accept is, am I understanding that correctly?
That's what we're hearing. Um, and I didn't wanna call Tom or somebody down there with without talking to you guys first about what might be possible, but yeah.
Have you been provided any information as to um if if our max is, let's say, four hundred, and I don't know what our max is, have you been given a number as to what that might look like?
Um, I don't know what it is. Our contractor looked into it, and and I don't recall off the top of my head. Um, yeah.
Okay. Let's let's uh not waste a a lot of time today on this issue, but let's regroup maybe tomorrow over the phone or something like that because I'd really like to dive into these numbers a little bit better, because going to Medford, that that shouldn't spend it all. That that'll that'll kill the project, and I don't, I'm not interested in doing that either. So let's maybe reconnect, forget how to make that happen.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll volunteer as well. Um, Commissioner, maybe you and I can work on it. I'm liaison to um solid waste, so I'm happy to Tom in and figure out what avenues we might have to.
Awesome, and we worked with Tom on other things in the past, so that be, he's good, yeah. So one thing while we're while we're on it, before we go off brownfields. Um, is I I wanted to be sure at some point to ask you about it. We can circle back on this maybe tomorrow also, is the peer grant coming up uh through the Oregon housing stuff. Um, and if there isn't something that we couldn't pair in Chiliquin, looking at that grant and the things that it is is able to do, that becomes a bit, so would love to pick your brains on that.
Thank you for offering to do that. We appreciate that.
I didn't, I didn't mean to overspeak. I forgot Commissioner Minty does the liaison of this.
She's a great delegator, yeah.
The time is now six ten, and Councilmember Gunga Huskak has joined the meeting. Good evening, Gunga. It's cool, good. If there are no other questions about the brownfield updates, then we will, we're gonna move right on to the Hervey Building. Uh Kathy, if you could help us out with that, I understand Hannah's not.
Yeah, I I I think we kind of covered in with the the Oregon Main Street Grant, and Hannah and Richard are um, we should have architectural drawings in the next week or so and and move to permits. Um, and most of the Oregon Main Street Grant will be spent on the exterior historic restoration parts um of that project, and Hannah and Richard's match will include a lot of the interior work on the building. Uh, that building has four retail bays in the front, so there's room for retail and six office spaces in the back. We're all sort of rooting for our own favorite businesses to go in there from a bank to a pizza parlor to a donut shop to, uh, so we'll see that, but I mean, it's it's really the cornerstone project for the revitalization of of downtown within the character of um, you know, the historic city and so just really excited about the activities, kickstart things here in town.
Yes, and I, what I wanted to add, and it's not on here, about Main Street is we just had friends of Chiliquin or Friends of the Children just opened up next door. The grand opening was yesterday. Very nice what they've done inside that space that they've created for the children, so encourage all the council members, definitely stop by. Um, they've got us lunch, you guys can stand on a great deal. And then across the street from the Mar Court Building is, of course, um, a new business going in there as well. The old gas station is gonna be turned into a, the consulting business is moving from the plaza down to the corner. There's a lot of many ideas. So this this town definitely does not have a lack of inspired ideas. It's just a matter of getting the capacity, a grouping to get, get some feet under and legs underneath that. Uh, we're thankful for Seadep and everybody else that, these small groups that are coming together to
grow.
Help build us then. Um, the next thing, and I I wish Hannah was here, uh that I'd like to talk about is the Bike Club and the New Bike Park. And I believe there is another image inside our packet as well, but up on the corner, if you look over to the far wall behind Dan Skelis, Skelis is the concept proposal that we have for our new bike park project, which will go in on the west side of northwest side of Chiliquin. Um, if you wanna talk about the bike park, as well as the Bike Club.
Bike Park, Bike Club, um, yeah, uh, again, it's in your packet if I don't cover it well. But uh Hannah and uh Richard, just in their graciousness and wonderful hearts and uh energy and enthusiasm, uh came to the city with an idea for a a bike park uh located over by Spinks Park, which is our big baseball area. Um, uh, the cleanup day for that was April first. Of course, everything was covered in snow, so so we've put that off. Um, but uh you can see it'll be a sort of a triangular bike park with different levels for different riders, um which pairs really well with the bike program that uh Hannah and Richard and CVIP and the community builders have uh put together. We bought Strider Bikes for the elementary school um with a grant, and Hannah teaches over there in the mornings with all the kids on the Strider Bikes. Um, they have Bike Club after school, that's starting so in in May, and this, there's huge demand. We had so many kids, we've now broken it up into three days a week uh after school and broke the grades up. Second and third grade, fourth, fifth, and then high school, um and and they meet for, I think, six weeks. Helmets, um, the bikes are are all there for the kids and helmets and snacks and food after school and coordinated with the parents picking them up. Um, it's it's just been great, and you can kind of see the community even growing around that opportunity. They do the bike rodeo for the Chi Town Family Festival, the kids come and and right there all day long as as well, so. Um, just amazing in a small town, when you find the right people with the right capabilities and just amazing things happen, so. And a great addition to the community, and we're very thankful for Hannah and Commissioner.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any questions about any of the projects or Chiliquin Main Street at this time?
Not a question, just to echo your gratitude for Hannah and Richard. They are, um, you know, we have so many wonderful people throughout the county in our communities, and then we sometimes get feed, uh, you know, really are fortunate and get new additions to that, and they fit into that kind of echo your gratitude.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we're gonna move forward to the uh safe routes to school.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here today. Um, so several years ago, the working together, the city and the Clamath Tribes had coordinated a community pedestrian bike plan, which was adopted by both organizations. And so then, working from that, um, there were several of us that got together, the planning group from the Clamath Tribes and Ben from ODOT, and we started looking at the plan and what we wanted to go after, and so we submitted a grant to ODOT for Project Four that was identifying the grant, and this was in the plan. And this was actually the second time we went after a grant for this, but this time we were awarded it. So we have a, so gonna be roughly about a two million dollar project, which will take sidewalks all the way along Second Street. So it runs across in in front of the elementary school, but the high school's right there too. So it provides paths from the high school through the elementary school, and then it comes down towards the First Avenue here in town. So we were hoping to submit a second grant, well, we did, but we were turned down to then finish up and go from Second Street through First and come over here to the community center where we have sidewalks. So we'll have one big section that we'll need to go after down the road. But we did get a grant for basically almost one point six million, and we do have a matching funds of four hundred thousand that the city does have to come up with. So that's gonna be a very big thing for us, because we have nothing set aside for that. So this would be definitely one of our requests to the county of how can we obtain any assistance over the next several years for this project. Uh, we will all be going towards other types, like the Ford family and other things, the community um under the amazing management of the Clamath Tribes, what they did with the Green Schoolyard Project of raising one point two million for that project. So we know it can be done, but it's a big ask, and so we do know that we need to start planning for that. We are right now a little bit on hold. Um, the IGA is fully signed by both ODOT and the city. And we've got the green light to move forward, but Ben and working with Ben from ODOT, he wants us and ODOT wants us to hold off for just a little bit right now, because we'll kind of move to the next thing. Um, and that is the Great Street Grants. So they submitted and then for their internal Great Street Grants, uh roughly close to about a ten million dollar project for the streets of Chiliquin. And so this is an internal grant, no match, nothing required. And this would basically be uh from this side, picking up from the sidewalks right down here and where the bridge is. So we have kind of from here down to the bridge sidewalks, and then from there, nothing. So this would pick up from there and go all the way down past the tribal administration and new fitness center. And ideally, the plan is to go all the way down to Dollar General with sidewalk or um multipurpose paths. So some parts would be sidewalk and bike pass, and then others would convert to a multipurpose path. Um, the goal here is we've had quite a few injuries and accidents down in that area, and we do have quite a few people who are ADA um and are using wheelchair and powered chairs and stuff, and they go down there frequently, you get their groceries and stuff. So we really wanna try to make that a good safe corridor. And then the other area is it would pick up again from this right outside here and go up north First Street for a ways to connect just some of the last buildings and stuff in that area. Um, the goal and hope is that this comes through. It's been pushed out. We were originally supposed to know in March, and now this month. Um, but they anticipated being wrapped up either this month or May. And what ODOT is thinking is that there is some scale of economies here between um the Safe Routes to School Grant and this Great Street Grants, um and how they can maybe merge those two together. Um, ODOT will also be what they refer to as bringing in our project, the Safe Route, so they'll manage and run it because the city doesn't really have the ability to do that. So that was one of the reasons they wanted to hold off. The other was that they also did submit uh CDS funding, Congress Directional Direct Funding, and again, um for the entire CDS funding package they put in, um, they chose this Chiliquin area as one of the um funding requests that merged in with all the others for the state. So it's kind of a duplicate, so they're hoping between either the Great Street, the CDS, or a combination of the two, that these funds will come in. Now that, those funds won't be for till next year, but again, they feel that they'll know by summertime if that's looking very strong. So um, so right now, we're a little bit of a holding pan plan, um but we do know we are gonna have to raise some matching funds and definitely you know, getting started on that sooner than later and overall to bring all these projects in.
Are there any questions on either of those?
Does that include, um, that intersection down on 97 at all addressing maybe some of the issues there?
The 97, no, it does address this intersection redoing it completely and also redoing the intersection as you come in right by the Catholic church there. Um, those two are two of the main intersections. Um, again, if they are able to get both the Great Street and the CDS, then they may widen out the project and do some more. Cause there's still some other areas of the bike ped plan that we haven't even moved to address. So.
Is there any conversation about extending maybe the exit ramps off of 97 to slow people down to make that turn to come into Chiliquin or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, but there, they are. So the tribes has requested some speed changes. Um, because they're going to, part of it will be a crossing walk between the tribal fitness and the tribal administration. And so they have been requesting to lower the speeds. So I know that they're in the process of putting together, um, speed reviews. I don't know how extensive it is, but we had talked about Highway 97 as one of those.
Thank you, Robert, so much. We move forward to the EV charging station. And I'm going to call Kathy to help us out with that. And Robert, both of you, maybe.
So other hat I wear is on the board for SIVIP, SIVIP. And, uh, so this is their project and the only reason mainly to both update you guys on this project, but also this will be turned over to the city once it's in completed. So SIVIP did go after a, um, mobility, e-mobility grant from Pacific Power. They were awarded it. It's a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars, no match or anything. It's all complete. Um, and this will be putting in a one dual port charger and one, um, fast charger. So it'll be actually three ports altogether, ability for three cars. Um, it will be installed on, um, so the city has parking lot that's next to the family market. So it looks like it's all theirs, but actually most of that parking lot is city. And it's across from the community center and where the art gallery is and, you know, so it's a really good location. So, um, the equipment has already been ordered. Um, currently, um, Atkins has, um, been contracted um, by SIVA to do the site plan. So that's currently in process, process right now. That should be completed very soon and then go to Dan for review from the city behalf. And then, um, and then after that, uh, begin to go in. I think it's scheduled to be completed all this year. And then once it's completed, it'll be turned over to the city. As part of the, um, purchase of the equipment, they have a five-year maintenance program already built in. So the first five years is all maintenance free. It's all covered. And but during those, the first five years, again, any of the profit that the city charges on that will come in. We can accrue that and be able to support maintaining those going beyond the five years.
Robert, I know it seems like I'm picking on you tonight and I'm not trying to. You got a hand in a lot of cookie jars here.
Yeah.
It's a good thing. It's not bad.
It's what happens when you have a little more free time.
Yeah. Uh, so we're going to move right into the parks master plan. And this also is a discussion of the old mill site. I know, I know the commissioners are excited to find out where we landed on that since we started talking about a couple of years ago. The neat thing about the, the mill site is it's still there and available, I'm hoping. But what we end up doing is reconvening as council and starting to put our, our plan together, our master, uh, priority list. And that one was just such a big project. So we just kind of had to beat on it just a little bit, Robert.
So we did submit and won a planning grant from Oregon's Parks, uh, and Department. Um, so that grant was for 28,000 and the city had already budgeted 7,000 for their matching part and the budget for this year. So we have 35,000 altogether. Um, the RFP is just being finished. So it goes out this week to a whole host of universities and of engineering firms and others that have expressed interest in bidding for this project. Um, our anticipation is to have this project wrapped up by the end of this year. Um, it'll consist of, um, uh, hiring an outside consultant, um, group that'll come in, um, conduct a bunch of community meetings, um, just like we did with the pedestrian bike plans. We'll meet from everything from the schools to members of the greater Chiliquin community, the climate tribes. And we anticipate several of those meetings, um, while they then also do an analysis of our current main park, the Spinks Park, the new bike park going in, the rodeo ground, and then other areas that have been identified around the community as potential park or recreational spaces. The end goal is to have a master plan created by the end of the year that would identify several high level projects that would be basically grant ready. So it's all ready to plug and play into OPRD construction grants or other types of grants that might come available. And, uh, other ones like for the old gym and the old mill that would help direct the city, county, whomever, uh, where to go next on, in those areas. And so again, we are, we've already put a project committee together that has been working on the pocket park and has been working on this. And once the bids come in, which should be at the end of this month, and then May, we hope to choose and submit a recommendation from the committee to the council, get the council to approve. And then, um, starting in June, begin to make the plan a reality.
Are there any questions for Robert? Council members or from the?
Yeah, not a, not a question, just a compliment. Uh, it's, it'll be really exciting to see what you all come up with for a plan. I think we're still, um, looking forward to hearing where you all want to go.
I know not so long ago, I was attending a LLC board meeting. And oh God, my memory. Forgot the city now. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do. By Corvallis. It's, uh, Monmouth and, um,
Yeah, not Monmouth, but yeah, the next one. Independence. Thank you. I was at Independence. And, uh, had, I'm great time talking with Mayor of Independence on what they had done with their location. So he had explained to me about the, um, gravel yards and stuff that had just, you know, been there all alongside the river. And no use for them any longer. And, you know, city had talked for years and years and years about doing something and never did. And finally, the council got together and said, we're doing something about it. So they put a plan together. And he was just walking me through it. And I was so impressed at both how they created parks and rec space with that, um, wonderful amphitheater park, but then also the new hotel that I was staying in and apartments and stuff that had been done by businesses and that helped to fund what the city had done. And it was just fantastic. And I, you know, again, was excited going back here about thinking, hmm, could we do some type of small, smaller amphitheater park? What could we be doing with this type of a site? So definitely where I hadn't been excited before about the old mill site after I'd seen that and saw what is possible, definitely I became excited and convinced that we can do something great long term.
We can.
And, and I
neat thing is, Robert went up there without even really talking to the, the council because he'd been new. And he didn't realize that we'd already put a little plot with the amphitheater and all stuff. It's like, oh, I see it. You know, I see it. So it was really awesome.
I think one, one last point I meant to mention earlier is, so in just three years, Chiliquin is 100 years old. Our centennial. So we're kind of with all of this stuff, you know, it's just been amazing that all these things have been coming together recently. And it's kind of setting up. So we're marketing this as getting children ready for the next 100 years. You know, that's kind of the tack we're taking with all of this activity.
So we did discuss, um, the pocket park earlier. There is that if you want to pull up the picture one more time. If you can. I don't know the last time that you've been here in Chiliquin, but I don't know if you noticed that we can't do with the flag pulls up on the corner now. And then, uh, Robert has pulled up. It's kind of what it kind of looks like currently. And we have, uh, the funding in place to transition it this year to start the transition.
And this is currently where our farmer's market, which I think starts this weekend, next weekend, May. Okay. I thought I saw them starting it up earlier, but anyway, so they, they pretty much fill up all along the sidewalk now. It's grown back up to where it was before, um, the pandemic. And then, so we would be going from this to this in that corner area. So this will create a nice little place all during the week, but then especially during the, uh, farmer's market on the weekend, this would be a great place. You go and grab something to eat and come over here and sit down in the shade and eat.
Thank you, Robert. We're going to move down to item 11, the emergency.
Pause you for a minute.
Absolutely.
One of the beautiful things about having a commissioner working remotely is you have somebody doing research for you in the backend. So if you'd like to come back to the Mark Ward project, Commissioner DeGruy, he's already reached out to Tom Crist and he's got some info for you. Commissioner DeGruy, if you're online.
Sure. Thank you very much. So we've been working on this building for quite some time and I knew I remembered that conversation that I had had with Tom, but, um, yeah, advantage of being remote, um, I can just give Tom a quick call and say, hey, remember when we were talking about that building and where are we at with asbestos? Um, we do limit the amount of asbestos that goes into the landfill. And that's really to discourage people from outside of our community trying to bring asbestos material in because we only have a certain section of our landfill that's set aside for asbestos material. And this cleanup of the building, um, that you're working on there downtown Chiliquin is about the exact same size of the amount of room that we have left. Um, and Tom is prepared to give that to the city of Chiliquin. He did say that the, uh, the road to access that area is not the same road you do for the rest of it. So we will need the, the landfill to dry out a little bit. So it needs to be a little bit later, um, in the season and, and let the landfill dry out. But he will be prepared to work with you to, uh, get that material transferred to our landfill.
That's fantastic. Thank you for that update and that very quick turnaround on that. Kathy, is there any information you need?
No, that's great. I'll follow up with Tom as well. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. Emergency alert system.
This project started almost two years ago, about a year and a half ago. So working with Ca- um, Kathy over here with CCB and with Chief Cook with Chilquin Fire and Rescue. We were really looking at how do we help address the issue of alerting and providing information to residents when we have a fire such as we did the last few years, um, not last year, but previous years. And so, um, CCB did a phenomenal job of getting a grant from the Ford Family Foundation. And that enabled the purchase of an electronic bulletin board. Um, we were also in the process of purchasing a siren and klaxon that'll go on the fire station. Fortunately, that company didn't survive the pandemic, so we're trying to find another one. We're trying to find one that's not just a siren that blasts signal, but actually can be communicated. You can hear a voice across the whole town. So we're, we'd like to get that. So we've got to find another vendor and put a new order in for that. But the electronic bulletin board is here and currently the high school is creating metal brackets. And that will be going on the outside of the, their headquarter building, which is right across the street from the post office. So it's a prime location for people to be able to come in and see and, uh, any information. So we can use it year round for, uh, for all kinds of stuff, but definitely when there is an emergency of any kind, it'll be one of the methods. Um, along with this, we had worked with Brandon, um, to really do a drive through our community of getting people to be aware of or alert and to utilize that. And, um, about four, six months ago, when we had our well problem and we had to shut down the well, um, he came in and we were able to craft a message that went out to people and, um, basically learning the problem and the, to stay off the water usage because we didn't want the system to run dry because then we would have been in a big nightmare. Um, and it worked. It, we hardly moved any water at all during that half day. And in talking with him and he went and did a look, most of this area, people have signed up for Oregon Alert through Plymouth County. So that is a phenomenal thing. And the last thing we kind of want to do is working with him is to carve out a little niche method, um, which the system provides for the city itself. So when we have not quite the big emergency that Brandon needs to release, but the smaller one, then, you know, again, maybe like the water situation where it's related to just Chiliquin, that we would have that mechanism to do that. So we still have that yet to put in place. Want to move to broadband, last one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so broadband is another very success. And again, shows how broader partnerships can really work together. So, um, so I moved, we moved here six years ago from California. Don't hold it against us, sorry. And, um, you know, when, when I came here, I was giving up one gig speeds to my house. I already had that on the rural areas of San Diego through the cable company. And it was a stretch. So definitely one of the things that really, how do we get better internet? Cause where I'm at, I'm at the very far end of one corner and DSL, it was like 10, if I was lucky and not even one going up, Meg. So, uh, talking with the council, we really wanted to, uh, make something happen. And we had another wonderful resident move back into the area, Crystal Stone. Um, and so she really also started pushing from her side of, you've got to do something about making broadband happen in this community. So we formed a advisory committee, um, and we had about six months worth of meetings, got a lot of things going. We had a lot of carriers, Hunter, CenturyLink, OLS Networks, uh, Comcast, others. We had a bunch of them all coming in and talking. And, but we also started having the Oregon Broad, uh, Oregon Broadband Office was actually joining our meetings. And SCOED was joining our meetings. And so eventually as things started happening, we started realizing that this is obviously just more than a small little town. If you, this was all of Plymouth County and especially even all of Lake County. So SCOED really jumped in. And so they've now taken over this and, um, and hired, um, Crystal to do a consulting work. She's done phenomenal. Um, and I think you guys got an update the other day on that. So I won't repeat that. But one of the things that really did happen was Hunter Communications really did step up to the plate. They had won the ARDOF award, but that actually didn't cover the city. It covered outside the city. It covered like Oregon shores and Modoc Point and other areas. It did not cover the city itself. But through all of this, they decided to internally commit. So they committed almost 10 million of their own dollars to wire the city and then using the 19 that they got from ARDOF to do the greater surrounding areas. So they've been busy. They originally had planned to wrap up by the end of March, but the weather has stalled them out. But if you see them, they've got about five crews out here right now, working, running fiber, putting poles in. They're anticipating being done, um, this month, the end of this month. And then in May, they will start opening up scheduling installments with the residents that want it and, uh, doing the actual fiber connection to the door. They have three plans that they've created for this community. Forty-nine, or no, 59, 69 and 99. And they go up, the 99 is, you know, one gig going up and down. Um, and the 69 is like one gig up and half gig down. And I forgot the other one, but, and those are supposed to be prices for life. So you sign up, you, as long as you live within the area, you can transfer that price and keep it. So it's tremendous. It's a great move. Now, the plan is that we still are going to be going after Now, the plan is that we still are going to be going after hopefully maybe a B grant to do a fixed wireless system that'll again be beyond the city. It'll be not just the city, but also out to Modoc Point, Oregon shores and stuff. And then the third thing that Crystal's also planning to do is to work with the tribes to do grants that are available to them to do a second fiber overlay as well. And the reason for all this is choice and opportunities. And one of the problems that we know so often happens is somebody is unfortunately not able to make that payment. So they decide to not make a payment for their fiber and they're cut off. And the rule with many of these companies, they don't allow them to come back on. And so that's again, another reason why to have multiple carriers, that there's another option for that resident at that time to go switch to. So that's the long-term plan and we're getting pretty close to the first fiber through the city and beyond the city being, starting to turn on.
Are there any questions or comments for Robert this time? Okay. The fire prevention activities? Either one of you want to go, at least? So we did invite.
I'll do it.
Okay. We did invite Chief Cook to come with the meeting as well, because he is a good collaborative partner for the city. However, he's not here. So you're gonna run down the list of things, where we've gone and what we're doing?
I will, I will.
Thank you, Kathy.
So one of my other hats is I'm the coordinator for the Chillicothe Community Builders, which is a program under Chillicothe Business Progress or CBIP. And we help sort of do the collaboration on these projects listed here. So following the 2020 fires, as you know, there's a lot of money available for recovery, especially through the Community Rebuilding Fund and Oregon Community Foundation, Ford Foundation, et cetera. So we started with a project last year and we did a community-wide sort of Chillicothe Fire and Rescue District-wide Community Wildfire Survey, asking a series of questions that got at, you know, what are the impacts? How prepared do you think you are? How prepared do you think your community is? What are you worried about in the future? What do you want to learn more about? We sent notices out to the entire district, so 3,000 people. And I think we got almost 200 responses back, 180 responses, so a pretty good number for the situation. And we have a draft report on that. And one of the things we're doing now is we got additional money to do a follow-on to that survey. Hire some folks to look at what are the major trends? And based on those major trends, what do you think we should do as a community? Where do we get the money to do some of these suggestions? And, and asking those folks to really sort of think outside the box in terms of moving forward. We are all also able to work together and get a new type-six wildline firefighting engine that came from Oregon Community Foundation money, the bulletin board that Robert talked about. Also a 30,000 gallon water supply tank for fire suppression out at the Sprague River Station for Chillicothe Fire and Rescue. Got the quote in from Modoc on the concrete for that the other day. That's about $100,000 to put that, that in and get it engineered and, and all of that. So, so the thing I'll look at the peer grant for is Chief will need another one of those tanks out at Modoc. And I think maybe peer money might be good for that. And then we partnered with Climas Watershed Partnership and applied for a USDA Community Wildfire Grant. Probably saw that notification, it was on TV the other day and all that. So $600,000, which will be used here in Chillicothe Fire and Rescue District focused on defensible space around homes. And the, this program is sort of several-pronged. One is we'll hire local contractors to come in and do the defensible space around your home or structures. If you can't afford it, you can't do the work yourself, we'll sort of prioritize that. Or if you're able to do the work yourself, we'll work with you as what that's gonna be. The fire department is gonna have a program of dump trailers kind of off of District One in Clamas County. They have little dump trailers, the fire department will bring it to your house, talk to you about what you're gonna do. You fill it up with woody debris, fire department comes back, hauls it to the transfer station and deal with it that way. Another part of that program is Chief's really excited. He's gonna get a brand-new shiny community education and outreach, fire education trailer that we can use, we can take to the Chi-Town Family Festival, we can take to the elementary school or to a pow-wow or. And do, and do some outreach. It can also be used for, there's an emergency in town and this is the place you can go to get information. There are the maps, there are the people who know what's going on and where the resources are. So really excited about that. That, it took them so long to notify us that we won that grant. We also applied for the State Fire Marshal Grant using sort of the same program sans the community education trailer. So we get both of those. We'll have a million dollars to work with the next three to five years within Chillicothe for defensible space. And somewhere along in there, I think I was participating in a Oregon Nonprofit Association, kind of following the bootleg fire. And they screened for that group, the documentary film Elemental. And I don't know if you've seen it or heard about it, but it's, it's called Elemental and it's reimagining wildfire is the subtitle to this, to this movie. And it's not available to the public yet, but you can do community screenings of the film. And we are going to screen that film here in Chillicothe on Saturday, June 3rd, late in the afternoon. I am, we struggled with this, it'd be Friday or Saturday. Sorry, Teresa, it's gonna be on, on a Saturday. But hoping to have a, a reception before the showing of the film where the fire department's there, representatives from the Climas tribes and the departments there that deal with wildfire are there. The film takes a new look at how we deal with, how we fight wildfire from using fire on the landscape to home hardening to defensible space. It's a bit intense in the beginning. The, it's well set up. The producers of the film have the, what they want you to say ahead of time and how to introduce the film. And they have a panel afterwards that we've set up and all the major folks are ready to go on that. I'd like to talk to somebody at the county, whether it's Brandon or, they gave me another name. I forgot, another person, but to have them there before the screening of the film so that folks can come around, maybe walk to tables where there's information on how to sign up for the, the alert system or what's going on the fire. The county just had some, I'll talk to Valerie Lane too, but there's, you know, and something in the news about notification of burns and that kind of, which people are excited about and worried about. And so the, the more we can, we really want to say, we heard you in the wildfire survey. We heard your concerns and we're listening and, and hear something very visible that your, your community, your county, your, your state government is, is doing something about it. So I think that's it.
Kathy, on that, did you ensure that you met with the county emergency management team?
On, on the fire film?
Yes.
I'm working on that. That's my next step.
Robert should have the contact.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The, the fire guys gave me a name the other day.
New person took Stacy's position, right?
Somebody, whoever took Stacy's position too.
Okay.
But I think they, they wanted to talk to you as well and make sure we're all on the same page. What I'm having trouble with mayor at the moment is, is getting a tribal emergency. I, I would really love to include the tribes as a participant in this because they were a participant in the wildfire survey and to have someone there and to include them on the information's grant. So I've written a, a letter to William summarizing, trying to set it up for him.
Make sure you see see the general manager.
Okay.
Because he will, he, he writes these things down, then he follows up with those programs. So he can't just write Chief Alvarez.
Yeah, mostly I've been talking to William Bagley.
William Bagley.
I know there, everybody's really busy, so it's hard.
I would see see a general manager.
Okay.
Cause then he'll look into it and they'll figure out what they can do.
Okay. I just don't ever wanna step the wrong, step in the wrong puddle.
Thank you, Kathy, so much.
Any questions on that?
Not a question, just more of a statement. The commissioners allocated a quarter million dollars to Chillicothe Fire and Rescue for equipment as well this year through ARPA dollars. So that'll help out quite a bit as well.
I, I just wanted to mention if you're, if you're working with these guys together. Last year, when Collier State Park put on the NASPD, where leaders from all over the country came, Steel had given a grant opportunity or an opportunity for, from a company out of Australia called the Dryad Early Fire Detection System. And we did a demonstration at the NASPD. I set it up in the park so people could see how it worked. But it's a sensor system that is attached to trees that has early fire detection. So I just wanted you to pass that along to the chief or when you guys are looking at things for early prevention as, as a potential resource for early detection. Dryad, D-R-Y-A-D. So we could be a pilot here in this region across the country if we could secure that system in this area.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else have any questions or comments? No, I'm gonna defer to Teresa on the sheriff contract update.
Fireworks employee Jackson goes to those meetings and he's geared on, so we want, we need to give that update.
I just wanna say that I'm grateful for their presence, especially the last couple of weeks. When I was out of town having surgery, my neighbor's house was broken into and their response was good. And I appreciate their presence in the community. And so even though it's a minimal contract, I'm really grateful for them being here in town.
Thank you. But it's kind of a nice segue into the Fourth of July concerns and needs. And right now, what we're facing is a situation where it can easily turn into chaos with our Fourth of July celebration. We've always been told, you guys got a better fireworks display than Climas Falls, the best one in all Climas County. That's kind of scary because we have a lot of trees. So what we were doing to address that, last year we had a meeting with not only the Climas tribes, but also with the fire chief to try to mitigate these things. And last year, our decision was marketing, marketing, marketing. Well, we tried to get the word out there, got some messaging out there, and it just did not seem to work. So we're now having to regroup and start these discussions again. Robert, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, so we did. We, sheriffs were here, tribe, tribal police, CFR, city. So we had a lot of meetings, did a lot of different marketing, social media posters, everything. Cause the council had, went ahead and outlawed fireworks, you know, legal fireworks and everything. Cause it's not, by the way, it's not a city fireworks show. It's just residents doing things off in the park and over in this area. And with the last several years with how dry it gets at that time of the year, the risk is really bad. So last year, the sheriff did send a couple deputies. We also had a couple members from Chief Alvarez and Willie Bagley were there. And Chief Cook had a lot of his guys all around the area. They tried to minimize, tried to reduce people doing firework and it just got ugly. It almost became near riot level in a way. I mean, to the point where the sheriff, they called, you know, sheriff and he said, just back away, you know, and just pull back, don't engage. And that's what they all did. They all just pulled back. This year, we tried to have a workshop meeting. Everybody except for the sheriff's office was in attendance. So the group that we need the most feedback on how, what can we do from illegal leasing wasn't even at the meeting. Chief Cook is very frustrated at this point. And basically, if nothing else is done this year, he, he just plans to pull his people out and stage them where to be ready for a potential fire. And I wish he was here and he could tell you his own words that he's told me many times very angrily, that either a kid is gonna get killed or hurt, or houses or buildings are gonna burn down. And maybe at that point, people will do something about it. That's basically the feedback I keep getting every time Fourth of July gets brought up with him. Because, you know, his is a volunteer staff. They do not feel comfortable and do not want to become the police. And try to, and I saw some of the footage afterwards and it was, it was pretty bad, what was going on over in, in the park area. So, and I understand why, you know, the two deputies pulled back. I would have as well too. But the question is, what can we do? What is possible to do either ahead of time besides just information? Cause that didn't work. And what could be done maybe that day? Or do we just all give up and wait for which year, like Chief Cook says, somebody gets injured, killed, or homes burned?
So is any, is there any county-level marketing or messaging that can be done? So, because the whole county, we're covering trees. That's Climas County, right? I don't know what else we can do as a city. Increase our liability and create, how does that reduce risk? It doesn't.
Right. So I, I'm not sure I have a perfect answer for you, but you did ask whether the county had any marketing. And I know the year coming out of COVID, the board had also been getting requests from a, what I would term a pretty small group, you know, please ban fireworks. And then a lot of people saying, don't you dare ban fireworks. And again, it was coming right out of COVID and there was already a lot of sentiment that sort of government overreach, they're telling us what to do. They told us to wear masks, they told us to get a vaccine. And so the board's feeling was this really was not a good time to then also tell people not to do fireworks or to require that people didn't do fireworks. So what we did instead was we did try to take more of an outreach approach. And I actually thought it was fairly effective and we didn't have a problem that day or Fourth of July night. But we, we, we used a campaign of please save your fireworks for New Year's. And, you know, sort of this, hey, we all love fireworks. Fireworks are great. Get as many fireworks as you can. Just don't light them off Fourth of July. Wait till New Year is when it's wet. That seemed fairly effective. And we'd be happy, you know, we have some graphics and stuff that we could share with you and you could tailor it to Chillicothe. But in terms of knowing that perfect answer of, I mean, I generally feel this is one of, sort of my own personal line of trust is, I always say like, I don't tell other adults what to do. Like, I just feel like that never goes over well. But, um, I don't know. I think just letting people be really clear on what the potential risks are and what the consequences are. Rather than, I guess, I guess this is my very long-winded way of saying, I generally find the carrot works better than the stick. But, no, I, I could be wrong. I often am. Do you have any thoughts? Well, he used to carry a stick, so he might.
No, those were great comments. I appreciate your comments as always. My head went right to being the chief of police again and I'd close the park and I'd have more cops on duty and things like that. But I don't know that that's necessarily the right response either. We, we get comms, I get comments quite a bit about the county's gonna be liable if somebody gets hurt in a park. And I would respond with, no, I'm liable for what happens. It's not the county's responsibility. So you were talking about, you know, how do you limit some of that, that liability? And I think what you guys are doing is really the right way to do that. Your messaging is really important. Letting people know what expectations are is really important. Is that a public park? Does it have hours?
It's, yes. So we are gonna be putting a short fence around it, you know, mainly to keep dogs out and to help protect, not like kids run out in the street. So it's not a fence that would keep people out. And basically the feeling from many is if it was a very tall fence, all closed off, people would just be ripping it off. So.
I was just thinking, one of the things that you might consider is having hours on your park. So there's an ordinance that says you can't be in the park after sunset or six or seven, whatever. I'm just spinballing an idea with you. That way, if something bad did happen, you could still fall back on while they were in the park illegally. That might be something to consider as well. But I really, like the commissioner said, sometimes trying to attack or attract bees with honey is better than vinegar. And I, I would probably just make sure that your messaging, your insurance policy's paid up.
Are there any other questions or comments on that issue?
My only thought was that they, my understanding was that only the fire marshal could, well, and the police, if there was enough of them. But they're just. Well, and the police, if there was enough of them, but there just isn't enough of them to do that. But the fire there marshal was also spread then on the Fourth of July, so we have a like a county wide.
An enforcement problem. We can't do, our hands are tidy. The best thing we can do is the safety. And ask people, and we did ask for people to save them for a much colder weather.
I I think one of the sticks, if we could get support from again sheriff and maybe even state police is the illegal fireworks that are coming in. So that was the big problem last year, expected to be again this year is that they know this happens over here. So people are literally that day bringing in truckloads of the illegal, much higher fine fireworks, which pose the greatest risk of all. And since those are totally illegal, if those could be. Stopped, that could help minimize the risk tremendously.
We also heard a community suggestion of having a sponsored. Fireworks show to try to detract, you know, from it. We don't even know if that would have an impact, but. It's been thought of and I don't know if trying it might help so that they still get their fireworks, but. You know, have to bring in a bunch of illegal ones and shoot them off after hours and without any.
And one of the tactics that we used in policing a lot of times, if there was an area of. Of a lot of criminal activity and a lot of dangerous things going on, we tried to make sure to interject into that area of positive. Events that detract from crim- the criminal activity. So maybe you might want to consider a family friendly type activity at the same time, same place. Sometimes that detracts from negative behavior. I think about, we had a neighborhood in Klamath Falls that. We worked really hard to to attract like pickleball courts and teams to come in and and play games in that park and it detracted from a lot of the. Illegal activities in that park because they didn't want to be around a bunch of positive people. So you might want to think about something like that as well. I get really concerned about just the flat enforcement piece, especially on the Fourth of July and I'll just be brutally honest with you. We didn't take any enforcement on the Fourth of July. Number one, there just wasn't staffing to do it. Number two, it sends the wrong message when you get in a big brawl in your park about your town. And number three, we don't have any way to seize those illegal fireworks. We couldn't put explosives in our evidence room. So what do we do with this truckload of stuff we just seized? We have no way to dispose of it. So.
Council member Heskock just said, let's just turn the sprinklers all on and wet everything down, you know.
Well, I know that random sprinkling times in parks does detract from criminal behavior.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your input. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about nuisance abatement. With the RVs and autos, the abandoned vehicles and the proposed pilot project. I don't know if you want to identify some background maybe?
I know with like the RVs. You guys are pretty well aware of it. It's hard to get rid of those. Because you can't take them to to the junkyards or anything because of the hazardous. Waste that's in there with the black tanks and the gray water tanks. And if we could fi- find some way of being able to. Get that to where we can get, maybe find a way to. Do the. Removal of those black tanks and the gray water tanks and find a good way of disposing of those, then we can. Get the. Scrap yards to take the remainder of it because there's good metal and stuff in there. But it's just the gray water and the black water tanks that and there's potential. Asbestos and some of the older. Travel trailers and RVs. So it's, that's the main problem with being able to do anything.
So the abandoned vehicles in Chillicoon, it's been a lingering problem for many, many years. And what we've had a problem with is getting them towed out. It sounds like, well, yeah, just call a tow company and it's left on prob- property even. Have it towed out. There's no tow companies that want to contract with the city currently. So Robert, talking with DEQ about a pilot program project.
So two months ago, February, we had a joint city DEQ meeting. It was part of their initiative of. Coming to areas that don't have a regular office or anything. So we had about ten, twelve members from DEQ here. And talking about a whole bunch of different issues and this was one of the big ones that we spent a lot of time on. And of course, one of the things we were all hoping was that the abandoned RV bill that they were talking about up in the state house would. Provide something, but unfortunately that has stalled out, so that's not longer. But what DEQ is working on, they are talking internally and with EPA. And I think Commissioner DeGroot is probably much more even familiar with this than I am, but. So what we were talking about is potentially doing a combined pilot program between. DEQ, EPA, City of Chillicoon and County of Klamath. And finding some land here on this area, you know, and and maybe the county has a better spot, but we're talking about the city. Would have some area that we could do. They were talking about, and I'm not an expert in this area, but our public works guys were very much into this. About what do we take to prepare the ground ahead of time? And make it a spot where both van and vehicles and RVs can be brought in over a period of time. Because I guess one of the things they were talking about is you kind of need about a minimum of fifty vehicles or so. Before it's worth it to bring in the equipment that would then do the crushing and everything else that's associated with that. So so DEQ is still trying to work out where to get funding. I guess they have to try to skirt around some rules and. Regulations to make funding available for something that's not quite fully specified. But I know this is one of the things they're working on and definitely from a city perspective, we were talking in that workshop that. We would be very open. Of course, I'd have to come back to the council for a full vote on, well, what are we talking about from the city, but. It's definitely a pilot program that we're very interested in. If we could do this and get vehicles that people are piling up and need to get rid of and then. Again, the long term of making this a pilot program is then how do you sustain it afterwards and not just here, but everywhere else. So. Was, that's kind of the focus that was talked about a couple of months ago and they're still working on it internally.
What was it considered to to join with US Forest Service and be a lion for the lambs? Because they're experiencing the exact same thing in the surrounding area?
And I, and and it sounds like. Part of what they were talking about is something that they've already done somewhere in Oregon successfully. And so it was kind of modeling after that where you, again, you prepare this area, you bring everything in. You get the sufficient number and then you bring in the heavy equipment to do the work. And then you disband everything back out and you keep the soil protected. And then maybe a year or whatever, you do it again, you know, down the road, but making it so that it's a sustainable funding type. And I I can share a little bit too, if that's okay. You mentioned, yeah, this has been something that we've been working on for for quite some time and quite frankly. Stirred conversations across the state because everybody's having these same problems. There is, and you'll have to forgive me, a a bill right now going through the legislature to try to help communities address this. I made a note just now that I will track that down, try to get an update on the status of that bill and then get it to the council. There may be some helpful dollars there. Yeah.
Hey, Madam Mayor, just had one thing on the DEQ visit.
Yes, please.
One thing, we had one community member come, we had sort of an open time for the community to come and and talk to DEQ while they were here. And one gentleman had a great point and a great idea, which is Klamath County hasn't had a hazard. Last called hazardous waste cleanup day in years. And I happen to be looking at that list today on the DEQ website. And you know, I come from Yamhill County and we had two every year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And so I think Klamath County is way overdue for hazardous waste cleanup day. So if that's something that we could get started, a lot of people would benefit from that.
Thank you, Kathy. We're going to move on to item eighteen, which is the housing concerns. And like I'd mentioned earlier on in the meeting, we did just approve letter of support for the turnkey project for the climate tribes. There is a housing crisis like much across state in Chillicoon. We can develop all these jobs and we can want people to come here and put in new businesses. The big problem, even more educators, the problem is there's no place for anybody to live. And a lot of people do not want to commute from Klamath or from other areas. Especially Klamath also has. I'm pretty sure housing crisis everywhere. So that is the background for us. The turnkey project the tribe is working on is redeveloping their proposal of. A mullet is property into low income housing for the tribal community. So what that entails, that that's a tribe question for sure, but if there's any other opportunities in the. In the community that maybe I don't know if the commissioner, you guys can share of anything that you're aware of. But it's, that's just a large crisis for us. Anybody want to add to that?
Just that the community had reached out online, basically on social media about a warming center. During the winter when we had power outages and so we, that that was addressed and we're trying to figure out ways to, you know, designate a building. For when those types of things occur so that there's a warm, safe place for people to go. We're still working on that. Still have more to do.
Yeah, the the county has tried to work toward addressing the housing concerns. With a sort of a multifaceted approach. One thing that the county did. Probably a year ago now, or maybe a little less than that, is reduce all building fees by fifty percent for any. Any developer, not, you know, just from a single house to. To, you know, a a major developer in in an effort to try to. Entice builders to do a little more building. You mentioned our own project turnkey. We have a facility and are now adding. Additional tiny houses in the back. We've also awarded American Rescue Plan money to. A group led by our economic development team that's also doing some housing projects. So, I mean, we've had. Sort of been trying to tackle it from different angles because it's some. The the problem is so massive that it really wasn't going to be just one solution. And it's encouraging that you're also talking about it and that you're working with the tribes because. It's one that we all need to be working on.
I would just add, if I may. There was another project for rehabilitating dilapidated and uninhabitable homes that the county partnered with the City of Klamath Falls on. That was a pilot project that we split the cost on, we think, believe we each put about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars into that project. Which would help bring those homes that we already have in our housing stock that are just not usable. That project got the attention of a couple of state representatives, state representative. McIntyre is currently carrying a request to expand that project by twenty six million dollars and going county wide with it. Frankly, I'm not terribly optimistic given the budget constraints at the state level this year. But I would look for that in. Following legislative sessions, perhaps next year or the year after where we may be able to get that funded and start taking that program county wide.
Are there any other questions or comments on issues at this time? Yes, please.
You say, see according to that, that there were some tiny homes being built out back. Sorry, that you, there were some tiny homes being built out back. Where where is this and who's doing that?
For our project, turnkey project, which we call project home front. It was the former motel on Highway ninety seven. We're using it for transitional housing for people coming out of correction. And the hotel part is already sort of up and running. The tiny house part is the newer portion. We've already had one such tiny home actually donated to us that was built by. A collaboration, but headed up by the Klamath Home Builders Association and actually students helped with it. So that was really exciting to see students get involved in that. But the, we are seeking out our additional grant funding to add tiny houses behind them.
So the reason I ask is because we do have a group here that is wanting to build some transitional housing. And I have called and I've called the county and because we do not, the city does not have a development code for that. And we're trying to put that together. So I was doing the research and I could get nothing through Klamath County or the city of Klamath Falls. That has anything to do with tiny houses. There's got to be a code, somebody has, you can't just build something, you have to have rules and regulations. So now you're saying that there's tiny homes, who's regulating that if the county? Building department isn't. Are are you making them a certain size that already falls under their development code?
So I I want to be careful because I'm not an expert on this.
Sure.
So. Well, I do know that I I do have some information from the county planning director that I'm happy to share with you. Because I think people actually ask him about tiny homes quite a bit and so I have, I mean. If I'll get your email address and I have a pretty lengthy email where he just lays out.
Okay.
Everything related to tiny homes, but in terms of the, on the building side, and again, that's why I say I'm careful because I'm not an expert. My understanding is that. Building codes apply to houses more than four hundred square feet and anything less than that. The code doesn't necessarily apply.
Well, yes and no, that's. Those are houses, the the smaller are not to be inhabited. And so the building code doesn't go there, but once they're going to be inhabited, they become housing. This is what they were telling me, I mean, in my research, so I would really appreciate that information that you have.
Like I said, the mayor has my email address, I'm very easy to get ahold of, email me and all.
Okay.
Connect you to the right information.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christian. Hey, that actually concludes what we have written on briefing, but if there are any other comments or questions. That we may have overlooked. Yeah, it's a good time. Teresa? Thank you. Are there any questions?
Well, I'm appreciate the thoroughness of your report and we were really excited to come. Our staff had shared with us that the information you provided before and they said they have nineteen agenda items. They're excited for you guys to come. I said, yes, they are. And so we, I I think I made a joke that, you know, it's nice to be wanted, like oftentimes people aren't that excited to have us around. So we appreciate your graciousness for sure. And again, the the thoroughness and excitement you provided and there is a lot of exciting opportunities. Here in this community, great to hear about it and before I I will close our meeting, but I want to give each of my colleagues a moment to. Say a word as well and maybe we'll go on the the Zoom first to you Chair DeGroot and then I'll have Commissioner Hensley.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mayor Bettles, Council. Thank you very much for having us in your home. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. I really wanted to be. Had a family issue to take care of and so I'm forced to be home. But thank you very much for your thoroughness, for all of your work and your dedication to your community and I hope that we can continue to. Partner to make Chillicoon a better place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Bettles and officers, thanks for allowing us to be here today. I agree with Commissioner Mindy, your. Your briefing and the number of agenda items you had was impressive. We've had other meetings recently with municipalities and. Have an item or two to talk about and so I really, really appreciate this. I also want to. Recognize you on all of the positive energy in Chillicoon right now. That is really impressive. I was, as you were, Robert, as you were talking about all of these things, I was asking myself, do we have as much going on in the county at the same? I feel like we're really. I feel like we're really busy at the county level, but you guys are incredibly busy. And the second thing I couldn't help but think is, you're going to take my job someday, Robert. Yeah, you are, um, you you are incredible, so all of you have a lot of really amazing things going on, I appreciate that. The one thing that I I would add though, that's not on your agenda, so I'll keep it really brief. The county is undergoing a strategic planning process. We're really excited about really writing our narrative differently than we have in the past. Who are we? What are we trying to become and how are we going to get there is really our priority right now. So we're working with a company called Moss Adams that is helping us write this county strategic plan. The reason I bring that up today is to let you know that you guys will likely get a phone call from Moss Adams. We want all of our municipal partners to have a one-on-one with that organization. To talk about your priorities and how you fit into the county and what you see the needs of your constituents being as a county as a whole. So expect a phone call from Moss Adams or um, you might get a pre-email from me letting you know that that's coming. But all of the municipalities within Clemeth County are are, we are, we believe and recognize are. Our key strategic partners moving forward as we try to write a new script for the county into the future. And one of the things that we continue to talk about is, this is an exciting time and an opportunity for us to rewrite a legacy for our children. And our children's children, um, and we're really excited about that, so when you see that, that's what that's about. We really want you to be engaged in that process and I challenge all of you to be engaged in that process to. Help us write our vision for the future of Clemeth County, so thank you.
Commissioner, on that, would it be beneficial to also send that company a copy of our current strategic plan?
Potentially, yeah, I'll see what they're what they're looking for, they might already have it, they've asked for a lot of information. Um, but just to maybe be preemptive, if you could shoot that to me, that'd be really helpful.
Perfect.
And with that, um, Ms. Mayor, I will go ahead and adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting at at seven twenty-five and thank you all for.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, we appreciate you coming out here.
I think there's even another table of snacks over there.
Drive safe home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful. So the, on the agenda, what we had next was city correspondence, however, we did cover city correspondence. The last thing on this agenda that I have, well, this page, right, two pages, right? Um, is the mayor's report. And we are going to forego updates on the grant unless there's something pending right now, Robert, nothing pending? City engineer report, did you have anything further to report on, Dan?
The only other item is the right away survey. Last time we met, um, there was some budget. Cost that needed to be checked on the city's side before the city can make a decision.
Theresa.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, it's good, we can, we can do that, um. And what the motion was, uh, and I should have just got ahold of the mayor that because she said she'd sign that. The motion was already made to to pursue it. Um, but she wasn't going to sign it until. We looked into that uh funding, so it's good, she can sign that.
Okay, I don't have any other items unless uh there's any questions for me from.
Are there any questions for Dan? Is there anything from the Public Works Department this evening?
I don't have anything, I don't know if Ganga does.
Just the letter in there, if you saw the letter.
Oh, yeah, the letter.
Organ Shores, thanking.
Yes.
Thanking the guys for their help with their emergency.
Okay, record a report.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Just a little more detail on the status of the uh brownfields projects. Um, on the assessment grant, we terminated the contract with Cardinal Stantec. We have the new contractor on board, thank you to those who served on the selection committee. So we've got all those documents, contracts worked out, we've started the task orders, we held a kickoff meeting. As I mentioned earlier, we did the structural assessment on the Mar Court and the Hotel Building. We're proposing a uh public meeting on May tenth. That comes up pretty quickly, be in the evening at the community center, just to get the community back up to where we are in the status of these projects. Um, let them know about that debris pile being removed and what that's going to look like. It's a Wednesday, I think, yeah. Um, and um, I drafted a letter, Kimberly, Teresa, it'll be in your inbox. Um, inviting the public, the city inviting the public to come to this meeting. Um, Julie, I wrote it as if if you wrote it, so I don't, we don't have to do it that way. But if you could review that quickly, it's going to need to go in the uh mailing at the water bill at the end of the month. Uh, Robert and I will work together on uh social media and advertising uh this meeting. We're working on the PowerPoint presentation for that, the fact sheets that'll go with that, so we can get everybody up to speed. I'm on vacation, the nineteenth of this month through the twenty-fourth, which means I have to get just about everything I that's. Ready for this meeting, uh, done ahead of time, so I'm under a lot of pressure to get that done, but anyway, that that letter's there for for you to look at. Um, I don't know, Teresa, that might, if everybody wants to look at that letter, maybe you can get it out and everybody comment on it email wise. Um. And then on the cleanup grant, uh, we selected the contractor, got those documents going, we held another kickoff meeting. The ne- next steps on Mar Court beyond that structural assessment. Um, and the structural was just the engineer coming in, looking around and he's going to tell us in general what he thinks. It doesn't look so good, it looks okay, it's going to cost a million dollars to fix it or not, you should just tear it down. Uh, whatever his sort of recommendation um is. Um, but then the next day, step after that will be what's called a design phase investigation. So we're going to go back and look at a few, couple of items, we'll probably do a couple more soil borings within the uh building around uh the uh. Underground storage tanks, just to get a better idea for when we go to clean up, what it's really going to take, so we can cut out a good bid document for the. Uh, underground tanks and oil pits and things that are inside the building. Then the Business Oregon Grant, we just talked uh about, that's the grant that's going to help get the pile out of there. Um, so I I I think what they said tonight was that they will take.
Mm-hmm.
This, um, I I had heard from a contractor that the 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 road down into the landfill for where this waste to go. Is steep and slippery, there's no way right now a big truck's going, going down and out. Um, and I think Teresa thought, maybe they said it was all going to be free, but I'm not, did he say free?
He said give.
Give us the space, he said, give us the space.
Yeah.
They only had so much space left, so they're going to, they're going to allocate it to us is what I heard him say, free would be great, but. We're going, we're going to pay a hundred dollars a ton, that's what we're going to pay.
If as.
Well, wow, I will, I will be confused when I talk to him, so what's the?
Going to be free.
Right, yeah. Okay, so, uh. That's, we were hoping that work could take place sooner rather than later. Um, because the asbestos companies get busy once school's out, because they're in the schools doing all the asbestos remediation for schools. But uh, it sounds like with this weather, we may not be able to push that, so anyway, those bid documents, they need to go out. I've put together the email lists for who we're going to email them to, but while I'm gone, I'll need you guys to do like we did last time, load it onto the. The website and send the email out, but I've already done all that sort of for you, so. That's where. Can be in that work.
Fantastic. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, document management?
I'm not, I'm not done. Oh, document management, I don't know why that's on there, did somebody have something for that?
Yeah, but we'll save it for the next time.
Okay.
I did see an RFQ on the packet.
Yes, um, I, but um, I want to start my, I want to start my portion, our portion of the meeting. With um, I had some uh bad news this morning about yesterday, we had. Uh, Craig, um, Herrig that used to work for the city, while he was still on our staff, passed away yesterday morning. And so I wanted um everybody to know that, and then also, I don't know those of you who know uh John Law. Who also was a city employee years ago, he was the head of the uh wastewater treatment plant and he passed away yesterday as well. So I I wanted everybody to know that, um. I believe there will be services for both of them, I just don't have any of that information anymore, right at this point. Yeah, there, now there's an RFP, the park uh plan. And an RFQ for the uh grant manager and uh those are two in there for anybody's uh input. So we need to get those out. Um, the uh park plan was kind of a collaboration of of, the RFP, of course. Uh, was kind of a collaboration with uh myself, Robert and Kathy, and I appreciate so much their input on that. And the RFQ is uh, Missy did that, so um. Any input on those, I know I'm I'm not asking you just to tell me right this minute, but we are going to get those out.
Just, what's the, what's the timeline you want?
Um, well, then now there's up there, uh, Robert uh sent an email which we put, should should be right in front of those that gave some dates. Um, on that, on those deadlines, right, and. So.
Robert, you sent this out?
Yeah, but we may have to push those dates.
Yeah.
Out a week because.
This whole document.
About document.
No, just so.
The reason why I'm asking is because I'm going to take this with me, unless you sent us this document.
No, I did not send it.
So what's the timeline, what would like to? For the review, for us to review.
I, for me, for the parks this week.
Okay.
I I would like to see that this week so we can get that out, because we're two months behind.
Right, we want to get those out right, I I wasn't understanding your question, Michelle, that's okay.
Um, and then the, the grant coordinator one, the same or?
I think that could be the least priority, I think the thing would be second and then the grant, make grant manager administrator the third, from my perspective.
I'm, I'm going to get them all out at the, as quickly as possible. Um, then, um, sorry. Was it, when we did the um survey for the recycling. Uh, the other day, we, we did a survey um here. Was that ODOT that asked for that, Robert, was that ODOT, I couldn't remember and I didn't pull it up? Okay, D.
That was DEQ.
Okay.
For the recycling.
The recycling, um, okay, so we did a a survey, uh, um. Robert was here, myself, Kimberly.
Fred.
Fred.
Charlie.
Charlie, we, so we went through that and and I just got the phone call today to uh from Laura. She did send us an email and then called me immediately, so um. I haven't read the email, but I'm going to answer it tomorrow. The thing is, we don't really qualify for, the the survey asked us a lot of questions. Uh, whether we want to advance, whether we want to get them big, uh, change our recycling, um. Do we want to have more recycling, um, do we need to, you know, just a lot of questions as if we had a recycling center. But we don't, but we do have, you know, the county does, and they come here and um do things here. So we kind of answered it in the way that would mean that we would help the county out, right? Like, one of the questions was to improve it and we said, you know, we need fencing, cameras and this sort of thing. Um, so. We can't do that, but what we, so their question was, and they're willing for us to. You know, they'll do some research and they'll get collaboration with the county for us. If the city wants to have their own recycling center, we can put in for that. And, you know, money's for um a recycling center that would have fencing, you know, what we could request, the fencing and the cameras. And that sort of thing, but it would have to be within our. Uh, authorization, whatever, you know, it has to be within the city. And if you do, what, if you would like to do that. Then I, um. What what the questions are, excuse me, is we would need to, um. We would have to have a plan and place, no, I mean, you know, not mop for them to put in for it, but part of it would be. How are we going to get the recycling material to, we'd have to partner with the county. And then how would we get that to the county's recycling? Um, we could partner with, you know, waste management, we could partner with the county, but we would have to make a plan. Um, on how to get it from Chiliquan to the recycling place. So what they need, and I don't mean to blindside you, but they, you know, got it to me today and I have to answer them tomorrow. Would we, would the council like to pursue funding to have their own recycling? Facility?
So. I I only got till tomorrow.
Oh.
I I would su- support such a thing as long as we had the ability to transport it. If if they're talking about um park funding, are they also, or is funding available? For staff, any sort of staffing, was that a question?
Yeah, it it. So, so this is kind of the state running in two directions at the same time. One is, they're creating a mandatory program that affects everybody in the entire state. Counties, cities, companies, manufacturers, everybody, and there's no getting out of it. What this second part, the second direction was, was they were asking cities to take this survey. And if you did so, you would be eligible for funds, and if you didn't do the survey, then there, you wouldn't be able to ask for any funds in the first round. Which, we don't know how long that is, so it's kind of this, you know, is the heart, is it? Horse behind the cart or in front of the cart?
Do we have the option of 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 saying, okay, th- this is the limited amount of funding you're starting with? And so this is how limited our program?
I I think so, I mean, again, the survey asked a lot of questions, but they were very broad. And there was two primary focuses of the survey. You have a program and you want to expand it, and you don't have a program and you want to create it. And and that's the direction we were taking was, well, we don't have anything, we don't, waste management doesn't, the county kind of doesn't. You know, so that was the direction we were filling out the survey was saying, yeah, if we're, if everybody's going to be forced to do something. Then yes, we might be looking at starting something if there's some funds. And it did seem, you know, when they asked, well, what do you want funds for, there was even in some places where staffing was. But it's still not clear because I don't think they're clear. So I think it's, it's one of these answers of, yes, we're interested. But until we know the full details, we might not be able, might not be big enough or whatever to actually do it.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that would be the direction I would ask the council to think of.
Yeah, I I I support looking further into it. I mean, we have a nuisance abatement issue and it could be a percentage of that, you know, so, yeah.
Well, and again, when you have a re- a good, solid recycling program, that would really get rid of a lot of things, like right now.
In a lot of places.
You know, you could take a TV for free to the transfer station, but you can't take a microwave or a lot of other types of devices. So if it's one of these programs where everything is going to, because again, keep in mind. The way they're planning to run this program, the way I understand it is, everybody who manufactures and sells something in Oregon. Will have to pay something that then goes.
That recycle.
Exactly.
Yeah, but there will be a lot of.
There will be a lot of funds.
So is the consensus of the council that you would like to pursue a recycling center within the city?
I would support it.
Yes, I would.
Joe, Joe.
Those three.
Yeah. I I need one more.
I guess my question is, is uh, w- we had that, you had that discussion earlier with DEQ about them having hazmat. Uh, uh, take back and I, we really need that because there, there's old paint and there's some. Cleaners and stuff that you, if you can't take to the dump or put them in septic. So I think uh, one of the couple of those days would be good, but I'm not sure exactly what are we talking about as recycling? Because.
Plastics.
Plaster.
Electronics.
Oh, yeah.
Because you, you, some of that you can take, they have a free, uh, was it? It's down the half block down from uh. Goodwill, they take refrigeration, refrigerators and and electronics and all that.
I think that there's a. I think that there's a a a percentage of our community that doesn't have the ability to transport these things. All the way to Plymouth Falls or even to our transfer station.
Are we talking about putting it inside the fenced yard right here?
Yes, it would. I mean, that's what, well, we we filled out the, when we filled out the survey, we said, you know, fencing, cameras. And uh. It seemed like there was three or four things.
Further into it, you know, before we people start chucking stuff over the fence and heading on out.
Which has happened and during cleanup days and stuff, yeah.
Yes, it has.
I'm wondering what we're gonna do about.
I know, with the close gate.
Two of them now on my street and they're just left. And I talked to the fire marshal and he said the city had to deal with it. So what are we gonna do?
Well, I um, I, that's a different conversation. It's a very good conversation, but I just need an answer for this because. Um, and I. I assume, and I will talk to her in the morning, but I'm assuming the way she was putting it is we need to give them an idea of. Who we would have, how we would get that recycled. Uh material to a recycling center. And I'm assuming that we could probably say something to the effect of that would be a a staffing. We could contract with waste management.
Yeah, that's exact. I think either you're working with a county or you're working more likely with waste management, so I think it's.
So I'll, I don't think they could force, you know, us to pinpoint something down because we don't even know. I mean, we wouldn't even know.
Really nothing out at this end.
And we're not applying for anything. We're just filling out an applicant, I mean, a survey. So, so you, so the consensus, am I understanding the consensus is that you would be interested in doing that?
There, I believe Robert, Gunga, myself and Kevin were all.
It's not a firm commitment. It's just asking if we're interested, and I'm interested in finding out more information. It's not a, it's not a city, we're not committing to anything.
Correct.
Just answering.
Committing to an interest of looking into it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Um. And then also, we need, uh you realize that you, we all do, but Mel. Is no longer here and he was one of our check signers. Um, I need another council member to be a check signer and. I need to have um the ca- a motion. That Missy be put on the banking account as well. Because she's gonna have to do banking and she can't do anything until. You guys give her that authority, but I need, I need both of those things.
Make a motion to put Missy on our banking. So that she can do her job.
And I need, I need a check signer too, so who are you gonna put on that? I mean, I'd like it in one motion because I have to give it to the bank.
Second, any of the.
The motion include also a check claimer.
I'd like to ask Joe to do the check signing.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I could follow.
Thank you.
A motion made by Michelle to add Melissa as and Joe as a check signer, seconded by Robert. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Then you post. There you go, Teresa. Thank you, Joe.
Was that a? Everybody saying?
Over a hundred percent, yes.
Thank you. So um Kimberly, did you have anything? Melissa, did you have anything?
I haven't called you that. I was been saying Missy, but I know I'm supposed to be more official than that.
I did have a question. Did we have that discussion about abandoned vehicles or motorhomes on property? Is there a?
So the typically on our agenda that would go under nuisance abatement. And I just, we we're not quite to old business yet. And I was just gonna, next thing I was gonna ask over the old business, if there was anything that anybody wanna talk about. But thank you for bringing that up. Uh Joseph, I actually wanted to ask you. And um great segue, Teresa just mentioned that Mel is no longer here on council with us. And he was the one that I had asked to be. The liaison with our maintenance crew. So he would, if they had anything or needed anything, he would check in periodically with Fred and with uh. Almost said Ed.
Charles.
With Charlie. To see if they needed anything, so he would act as their liaison to council. I wouldn't to ask. Normally, if you'd be interested in taking that part for them.
I I guess my question is, uh, is that so many hours or?
No.
Just checking in?
It's just checking in with him. I did ask.
I just, I go down and talk to him and just get up here to. And if they need anything, you know, like uh on the back trailer, a couple of holes and broke and stuff. That Charlie was able to pick one up and tell and the other one I had to bring the deal over here. Missing Teresa.
Yeah, I I think, yeah.
That'd be wonderful. I did ask Fred if he could attend one, at least one council meeting a month. And so he, we could get his perspective, his report. But then the other meeting, if you just make liaison, is if he has something, then you can.
Oh, okay.
He can go right up, go right up.
Yeah, like he did la- the last meeting. Yeah, that was really good. Okay. Okay.
I apologize. So at this time, uh Teresa, you said you were done?
I I am, thank you.
Thank you very much. Melissa, did you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, we're now gonna go down to section eight of the old business. And in there, there is nuisance abatement. If there are any other of those topics. That we need to discuss at this meeting, please speak up, but we will cover nuisance abatement. Um, we'll start with Joseph. Did you have questions about that specifically?
I didn't know how how far in depth you guys had that decision or that. The history of when you guys, did you guys contract with uh a tow company that pulled out all the? The abandoned vehicles?
Teresa.
Um, we have, the council has done that. We had, I think Kevin can probably answer that question a little better, uh because he was the one that was involved with um Diamond Towing. And he was the most recent, so.
Diamond um. Out of. White City that um we contracted with, that he came and. Got the, picked up the abandoned vehicles and stuff that. We were having problems with that. We would, if people. Wanted to get rid of them and they gave, had titles, he would come and pick them up right now and do that, but if they're. Just sitting on city property and. We give a notice to the people to move them and they don't, then we can put a sticker on their car. For, and take a picture of it and within seventy-two hours, he'll, he can come and get it legally.
But that's not motorhomes or RVs or anything like that. That's our big problem too.
The RVs and travel trailers, they will not touch.
Because of that black water issue that you were mentioning earlier.
Hazardous materials in it from the black water tanks and possible asbestos. Nobody will touch. Those, un- unless if they're, they've been cleared. Then you can possibly find somebody to take them, but. The salvage yards will not take them.
Well, then that's kind of like solves that problem if they're not gonna touch them. But what I would like to know is the two, the, what I said, what are we gonna do about those? Mobile homes that burnt down? And they're just there. What I, the fire marshal said that the city was, had to do something about it. What can we do?
The only thing we can, that I know that we can do right now is send the landowner uh. Notice that they have to get that cleaned up. And then if they don't get it cleaned up, then we can. Issue them a citation into court and then it goes over into the court.
Well, I think we should do that.
Yes.
I would like that to be done.
Which which ones are we?
We're talking about Millie Moore's old house. And the one next door to it, I don't know.
What I'm curious about at this point in the conversation is any previous ones that have been submitted to the court, what the, what the ending result was? Uh, how, how, yeah.
Because um Millie Moore's place is still in. Their name and they're deceased and.
No, it's in her daughter's name, so you have to send it to her daughter.
When was it changed into their name? Because it's been in Skippy's name, if I remember right.
That's not what she told me.
Yes.
Her daughter told me it was in her name now.
But have an- any, anything that we've referred to the courts actually come to fruition in the courts?
No, because.
There's gotta be something that be done.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question is, is, is we have. A contract with the courts, we have citation booklets. And if we, what what's happened in the courts that stalled these processes?
Okay, so. Was, so what happened was, yes, and they, and we, we just haven't got ourselves back into the. Doing it and we need to. We, you know, we need to do it and we need to pursue it and, but. Prior to that, and that's exactly right, COVID happened and then we couldn't get anywhere and it got set aside like our things do. No excuses, it's just a fact, so we do need to start pursuing it again, get those letters out there and citations and and. Get back into it. We, you know, it took us a while to get into the court. We never really got things. We did have a few and we sent letters. And went through the court and that the people, I think it was the uh over on Lelo and that man came and. Not only did he come in and clean it up, but he sent the money to the the court that that's. And then, and then we went into COVID and then we just haven't stepped back and started again, so it's something we need to do.
Well, can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
And it's also an all, but it's uh two of them now. In front of those houses and those need to be gotten rid of. And like um. There is a tow company that'll do that kind of work. I brought this forward.
Oh, the that'll do RVs? Oh, okay, whoa.
So, but you could call them.
So this one that you're giving us is like for cars and stuff like that?
For cars.
Vehicles, okay, okay.
I have been noticing online that people are. Taking unlicensed RVs and stripping them and they're reselling. So. I don't know who they, yeah, I don't know what they're doing, but.
So, Michelle, was that here or just random? That you're seeing?
Here, but. I don't know, research would have to be done to make sure whatever they're doing is legal and, yeah.
Well, if you have any, any leads, let me, you know, know and and we'll, I'll certainly look into those because that's a big deal.
Stuff that are just.
Well, they've got to be held accountable because we pay, we pay taxes for the nuisance abatement. And it's just ridiculous. We've gotta do something. I don't know. Um, what we can do exactly.
Actually, with that being brought up, I have um talked to Rick Vaughn with the county. And they have hired a couple new um nuisance or code enforcers in Klamath. And he is willing to. Bring one up here for Chiliquin to train a personnel. In, in that field for Chiliquin. And he's already talked to the commissioners. They said they're the ones, they've gave, given him the okay, but we just need. Somebody. Employed with the city. That can take on that training, that can do that.
To get one.
So are you considering maybe the? New hire for the part-time might include that as a duty? Is that what's?
That's what I was hoping to be able to do is get him because. Get the part-time person into being able to do that, so that way. Because he's out doing grounds anyway and doing things.
So if we, if we've just lost.
So is that something that we can ask the staff? We can talk to. Just see if we can get some kind of plan or approach. To see if that's even something that's realistic.
Kevin trained up and gave him so much. For so many hours per month.
Who's Kevin? I didn't know he was talking about him.
Is that something, a training you'd be interested in doing?
It's possible. But yeah, I could probably do something like that.
Well, he's interested in the train.
I mean, if we could do that, because I know with being like on council.
Can you look into that?
Yep.
Well, it wouldn't be any. It's big for all the stuff her, she does for mayor.
Exactly, stifened.
Yeah.
And so it features, look the same, stifled.
So the other question, so we're, we're looking at those two avenues. Uh, can you develop, re- put some life into that list that you had started? And follow up with all of the submissions that you guys had in court? And give us an update at the next council meeting?
Yeah, I can try and.
Try and do that.
Yeah. Teresa's the one that's got all that information.
The list and stuff? Well, you know, we're talking about all these RVs and these cars and stuff and I just get these images. There's some on that corner and there's.
RV over at Clyde's. Are you asking us to have like a list of where these things are?
No, just, just if you can put some new life into it and do some. Wasco Street, there's two.
And bring that and let you know, and do something and then let you know what we're doing. Yeah, great.
Perfect. That's on Wasco. Are there any other questions or comments on this? As it is, so we're gonna look into some training and the nuisance abatement team is gonna look at what we have done in the past. And give us an update on where we're at, so that we're putting some new life and movement into nuisance abatement. If there are any other ideas, cuz I know every time that we bring up a topic. Sometimes we walk away from the council meetings and then we're like, hey, should've thought about that. And that's why we have these running agenda items that we can continually come on, come back with and when there are updates. Are there any other um old business items that we may not have touched with yet? Or touched on today that council members are dying to talk about?
Just one little update?
Yes, please.
Thanks to Atkins Engineering, by the way, is one of our gold sponsors for Chitauq.
Thank you. Gold sponsors, not even silver, gold.
Hey, seeing you like to give that gold out and sponsor us with gold, man, I'll take some of that gold that you're giving out.
All right, I gotta circle us back to the agenda. Is there any new business tonight?
I think with the last meeting where we were out of town, we talked about. Workshop for the stronghold is what I put down on my calendar as a placeholder, so that would be next week. Is that still something? And I don't even remember for sure all what was gonna be discussed.
Yeah, it was, it was decided to to do a workshop there. Well, well, what that is, is we don't have. Remember, we don't have a building code for that.
Yeah.
So I had brought the research together, but council has to make some decisions, not at the workshop, but. Suggestions, things that they want to pursue, so that I can actually put something together to bring to the council. To look at, because then it has to go to a public hearing, blah, blah, blah. I mean, cuz there's just so many different avenues that you can. Do, I mean, you could do them all if you want. I mean, like, allow it on private, allow it on public, allow it in residential, allow it in commercial, or you can say. It's not gonna be in commercial, it's not gonna be in residential, it has to be this size, it has to be that size. Those are the things that I need from the council. So it's something that you guys can have a workshop and just really discuss it and get some suggestions, ideas and thoughts. And get some suggestions, ideas and thoughts around table discussions. So that we can put together a proposed amendment. Well, or you also have the option to say, no, we're not going to do this, right? So uh, but at previous council meetings, you have indicated, council has indicated that you do want us to pursue this. So that's, that's why I'm pursuing it.
So the topic hasn't been specified. I'm going to name, we are talking about tiny homes, correct?
We're talking about uh transitional housing, homeless housing uh. You know, not tiny, not tiny homes, not tiny homes, because those are.
Transitional housing.
Transitional and homeless uh, what do they call it? Shelter in place, things like that.
This is why I wanted to clarify, because we're talking about something, but not all council members are aware of what we're actually talking about.
So it would be like a, a place, uh, what the stronghold is looking to do, but you guys could expand on that. But just what they're looking to do, they're, they're going to have just a bed in there. You know, they're not, they're not going to have bathrooms or anything else like that. Some places that I have talked to in their transitional houses. Require um bathrooms. They don't, they, you know, but the stronghold in particular, because that's the one we're doing. But you guys can do whatever. Then you have a, yeah, you have a community kitchen and bathroom and shower. And then their little individual sleeping units. But that's why we have to talk about this, because you might be for that. You guys might say, no, let's make sure that they. Now, the county, they have a requirement where they have to have um, you know, like a smoke alarm sprinkler system or something. But that's through the county. So these are all the things that we need to talk about. The council needs to come up with um, I think.
So what's different than like a campground that rents out a whole bunch of yurts, right? They don't necessarily have bathrooms and lighting and everything else.
Right, these are things you guys just need to talk about.
I'm just throwing that out there so that you guys can start thinking about outside the box.
Other social service organizations, uh, uh, it, it could be two different categories. Other than residential or commercial, it's a social service organization. Would we allow it in a residential area? It's a, and on a case-by-case basis because of its social service status.
In a short-term, how short-term?
Right, all those things, absolutely, Michelle.
So, so I know the stronghold is definitely a big, more immediate focus. But I definitely would like to see us widen out and maybe over time handle a few more things. Because there's going to be a huge amount of money coming from the state around this, because the number one issue for the state is all homelessness, houselessness. Um, there's also an initiative, which I was too busy to bring it up to you guys, but there was state. I think it was parks money, but you might be, can correct me. Um, so if a community wanted to put together a place where people can camp that are houseless, you know. And I don't even know if we want to do anything along that line, but again, it's an opportunity. There's monies that are coming available. A lot of the mid-sized cities are moving in that direction. And then the other thing we might want to look at is inviting Crystal and Greg to the workshop. Um, so they were updating the commissioners the other day at the SCOED meeting on initiative they're doing as private homeowners. So some of the property they built, they've worked with some metal prefabber. Um, and so they are going to be putting four houses on an area. Um, and they've gotten these costs of these homes and the timing down very short, less than six months. And the homes will come and be put in place. And the county commissioners were ecstatic over it the other day. So, you know, they're right here in our community. They need to have them, if not at the workshop, at a future council meeting. Have them present what they're working on, what they're, what they've been learning and what they've uncovered, because I think that would be awesome.
But my understanding is, and those people did come in here, but my understanding is that that's not transitional housing.
No, I understand. I said branching out into a broader and more greater conversation. Doesn't have to bury this first workshop, but down the road.
So do you have this workshop scheduled already?
It was, it was scheduled from the last meeting.
So when is it?
It's the, you know, their third Tuesday of the month, one that we, the council started doing workshops on, so it's next Tuesday.
I don't know what time that is or any.
Five fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it has to be, you know, it's a good question, but I think it's a viable project, but I don't know the city has the right.
Sorry.
It's one of those round ones.
Very effective housing for.
Based on Mongolian houses.
Not quite a RV.
So um, no other new business? I'm going to ask, is there any public input tonight? Oh, Dan.
I forgot something on my report that's kind of important, um, if I may.
Yes, please.
Um, so once something's kind of come up recently, I think council's aware of is uh city design standards uh for developments and construction. Um, we have a policy guidance document. It's, it's pretty slim. Um, and then some development ordinances too that are kind of slim. But uh, we reached out to City Klamath Falls to see if we can use their uh design standards and their uh. Very, very close to publishing new standards, so they're working on theirs right now. They're very, very comprehensive. And they, they offered that we could, we could use theirs. So there will be some modifications we'll need to make, just to make it fit Chiliquin. But that's, that's a, going to be a big boost on the, how the public works, engineering side of things, uh, especially going forward. Because a lot of the things you guys are talking about, we haven't had a lot of developments, but there's.
Yeah.
Now we're starting to get those and it makes it difficult with public works and engineering to review those developments, because we don't have a lot of guidance. So something that's coming up here.
Perfect. So we should enter, enter that under your heading. City designing standard updates. You're Dan? Is there any at last time, any other new business tonight?
Yep. We're not talking about it tonight, but if we could get it on a future, um, so I know there's been emails that have bounced around a couple of times. For different uses of the Honda or Townall or whatever duplex that we own. Um, I think that we should confirm with CFR. They're really going to do something with the one half. And then for the other half that's now vacant, I think we should get a contractor in to look at it all. And come back and give a report on, you know, hey, this really should be fixed right away. This would be nice to fix. These are in great shape. Don't worry about it. Because I worry about an empty building that just continues to be empty, um, that it just continues to deteriorate. And so something that might be worth something to the city eventually becomes tear it down. Um, and then if, then once we have the report, we can decide what we want to do. Do we want to take money or go get money to fix it up? And then do we want to rent it out? Do we want to sell it? What do we want to do? So I just hate seeing it continue to sit there when nobody end it and that the second half becomes as bad as I heard the first half is. One half is to the other half.
So are you saying that it's inhabitable? Is that what?
Well, what I've heard in previous council meetings, one side is and the other side has some issues that need to be dealt with. But now that there's no longer a tenant, this is a great time to get in there, fully understand and have a report come back to the council. You know, what's needed to both sides, or at least the one side.
Question about the potential tenant would not happen tenants?
Nope.
Okay, um, what about also this old city hall? I mean, if we're going to be doing that, we should evaluate.
I, duh, that's potentially a good thing. But definitely the duplex, since it's something that could be then decided to be rented out. And, you know, keep it from falling into further disrepair and even maybe make a little bit of money for the city in the meantime. But I know those are things that need to be talked about. That's why I'd like to raise it, at least for new businesses down the road.
Isn't the one still um occupied by the stronghold?
No, they never.
They've never had it.
They never, we never.
So another thought on that, Robert, the, the council members may want, they want to think about or consider. Is actually having property management, somebody that will come in.
Oh, there is a property manager in town now.
Well, you're talking about Crystal? Her or um Credit Lake Realty has their own property management team. So they could actually potentially be the ones that go in, ah, we can't rent this because of this, 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 this and this. So we could just, as a courtesy, we say, hey, we're interested in using you and you come and look at this and see if you guys can rent it.
Yep.
That might resolve that.
Yeah, get it for free.
Well, not just that, um, property management doesn't cost too much.
True.
And it's good, they, they do all of that.
Yeah.
Just real quick on that, um, I don't know how old the duplex is, but if you need asbestos in the base paint, um, we can do that.
Oh, let's put it on the list too.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I didn't mention, but we're going to soon be going back through all those priorities, especially with the public meeting coming up. We'll get public feedback and what they think priorities are and city will go back through that.
So, so maybe if somebody could contact Credit Lake Realty to see if they'd be interested in doing an analysis. And potentially give us a recommendation or report of what it would take to bring it up to speed and rent it out, what it could rent for.
So that gives me, gives us time to.
Well, do you have asbestos? Do you have asbestos problems?
Would you like to be tested?
Okay, so we need him tested too.
Okay, so what we're going to end up doing now then is uh, the ladies are going to reach out to Credit Lake Realty. If there is any cost involved with that, they will bring it back, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll vote on the next steps at the next meeting. Thank you for that. Is there anything else for new business or agenda items for next meeting? Okay, I'm going to ask, is.
For next meeting, um, I will be out of town, LLC board meeting and convention.
What is the?
Try to join um remotely if possible, but there is a possibility I might not be able to.
I don't have a calendar. What's the date of the next?
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, I won't be here either.
Okay. I don't know if I'm going to be here. You're not going to be here. So we may not have.
A meeting, okay.
We may.
So Robert, would you like have a schedule ahead of time enough that you could let us know? So that if the, you know, like a quorum count, because you might have a meeting at that time, right? So.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't looked at what the agenda, but since it's in the evening, we, our meeting's in the evening.
So Joe, you said you won't be here at the next meeting? Okay. Michelle and Joe will be here. Okay, I got you guys.
The three of them will not be here.
So that's not.
For sure.
So that's not a quorum. We can't have a quorum and if three are gone.
And I don't know if I'll be here or not.
Well, maybe we should change the date of our last meeting. Monday, I'll be here.
Well, the requirement is to have one a month and I'm okay with that. Unless there's something pending that can't be emailed. I don't know if we need to necessarily change the date. Um, is there public input tonight? Unmute. Look at our microphone.
Yeah, a second.
What are you trying to do?
So, good evening Judy. I don't know if you are here for a public input or not. If you could please let us know by a, a quick message. We are working out the details to unmute you. In the chat, you should have at least chat option. Or a thumbs up or raise your hand or any of the emoticons.
She's able to if she wants to.
Okay.
Just real quick.
Yes, Kathy.
I won't make the, the workshop next week on, not tiny homes, but transitional housing. Um, I'd be interested in learning what Crystal's able to do with her property, because it's not very often that you can take private property. Not private property of any small size anyway, and put additional homes on it and have people live there who are not family members. Typically, county rules will say no more than five unrelated members in a household. And Oregon law does not let you build additional residential structures on anything.
I don't think these are additional. She's bought a whole bunch of property.
That has already.
And I think she's putting one small, smaller home in each one. And they're, they were originally trying to do everything from stick build to manufactured homes. And everything was a year, two years out. And then they landed on these metal homes, what they were showing. And um, they were very financially sound and they were very fast to bring them in.
I guess my point is, it's just, that's not often an option for a lot of people. It's not a, a so, a wa- widespread solution for, for this. But um, you know, and so um, maybe I'll type up some thoughts on this and, and share it with y'all for things to, to think about. But um, I'll miss that.
Yeah. I know a lot of cities have been going through and making changes to their codes. So that they, you could have a primary house and then a tiny home for, you know, granny's flat or whatever the case might be. So been a movement.
Typically an ADU um, like that, yeah. But you know, you got to think about all of that and the implications. And the implications on your utilities and systems and fire hazard. You, you crowd ADUs into small lots and here in town and associate in the, just so many things to, to think about. Before you go down that road.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, we did not get a response for public input this evening and with that I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll second it.
Motion by Michelle, second by Kevin. All those in favor to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Don't leave yet.
Aye. Monday, eleven o'clock to one, pre-launch LLC regional meeting, community center.
The time is now eight nineteen. The regular city council member meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.